We are live on YouTube.
Live on YouTube, good. 6:59 by my watch. 7:00 PM by my watch, which means we begin our city council meeting. So I would like to welcome everyone today to the special city council meeting for February 2nd, 2020. Roll call, please. Ms. Myers?
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Member Volter?
Here.
Member Neary?
Here.
Member Neiman? Member Kelly? I got you. Thank you. Member Kelly?
Here.
Member Basler? City Administrator Fawcett?
Here.
City Attorney Edmondson?
Here, thank you.
All right, we have a near full council. I appreciate that. Move along to the moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance, please. The pledge of allegiance, we have a flag behind my shoulder. Please use that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Now we'll move along on the agenda to the mayor's report. The first thing I have to report for the city is the administrator role. As we know, Mr. Fawcett has been in the administrator's role for the last 30 days. I want to give him a big kudos and shout out because he has met with tons of people from developers to residents and city heads to understand the city of Dayton. He's done a wonderful job and we're very lucky to have him in that role. However, it is an interim role and we have put together with Northern Kentucky Area Development District a search for the next Dayton city administrator. We have received numerous, I don't want to put a number out there, but numerous resumes from many qualified candidates to fill that role. And the coming month or so, actually in the coming weeks, we'll be meeting with those candidates to have job interviews and do background checks and all those good things and work with NKADD to find the right candidate to kind of lead the ship for the city of Dayton. I'm not doing this alone. Again, we're working with Northern Kentucky Area Development District. They've done this search for many other cities in our region. They are qualified with understanding the role, with understanding the duties of that role and the candidates and their capabilities of executing that role. So we're very lucky to have them. So we'll be doing those meetings in the next coming weeks. I'm going to ask right now of my city council if anyone would like to to be a part of almost kind of a small committee to overlook resumes. And I would like to have that with City Administrator Fawcett as well as NKADD and myself to review these resumes and find our next city administrator. So if anybody on city council would like to be a part of that selection committee, please speak now or forever hold your peace.
I would like to.
Member Volter said yes. Anyone else?
I would like to.
Mr. Basler said yes. This is your time.
I would volunteer. I'm already on the COVID committee, but if you need...
Be on any committees you like.
Okay, then I volunteer.
Ms. Neiman, apologies. All right, going, going.
Sir, will the, will all the resumes still be open to the rest of council?
That's a great question, Mr. Neary. I would be more than happy to, and this is beyond the, it's the mayor's decision, but I think that everyone, I hope that everyone knows that that I try to hold this office in a democratic position, that I try to make everything available to everybody. So yes, the resumes will be available for you to review. And maybe you know something about a person that I don't and you can say, "That's a bad choice." And so I'll open up those resumes next week here at, or this week at City Hall for you to come by and take a look at. And please keep everything confidential as these candidates may have current jobs, et cetera, and don't want to put anything at risk for them just because they submitted for a role. So yes, Mr. Neary, all resumes will be available for city council to take a look at.
Mr. Edmondson, I have a question on the hiring process. I understand that it's the mayor's decision to, whose name to submit, but doesn't council have to approve that hire as a non-elected city official?
Ultimately, yes.
Thanks for clarifying that.
And since three council members, Ms. Myers, if you please, take note of this, have asked for those roles, if we can keep this on a one-on-one basis to make sure that we are keeping up with sunshine laws, that'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Is that, is that correct, Mr. Edmondson?
It's correct.
Thank you. Want to make sure we're doing everything legally and on top of the table. So it's been a very exciting time. It's been exciting. We have got some great candidates that are looking for this role. And it's pretty exciting. So we'll bring those candidates together and we'll find the next person to work with us. The second thing I want to bring up is a COVID relief fund for the city of Dayton. Back in August, I want to say, maybe even July, the federal authorities said that they would allow for certain things to be allowed for COVID relief funds. We applied for those. We were accepted for those COVID relief funds. There were only certain things that you could apply for. One of those was first responders and we know how much we appreciate our police. So we applied for COVID relief funds for $394,000, $95,000 of COVID relief funds. That would be allowed into our budget for first responders. Those were accepted by the federal government and we accepted those funds back in September of this year. And those funds were placed into the general fund to fund the first responders' salaries. And so we accepted those funds back then. Today, and I'm not going to step on Mr. Yoder's toes because he has a presentation he would like to give, but we have an additional $126,000 that was released to us by state for COVID relief. And we will be, we've been working with the COVID relief fund committee that exists of Mr. Fawcett, myself, Ms. Neiman, and Ms. Kelly on how we can distribute those funds, but I'll let Mr. Yoder speak with those. And those are the two big things that I wanted to speak about today on my mayor's report. Does anybody have any questions regarding the COVID relief funds?
Mayor, just a clarification. These are federal funds that come to us through the state department of local government. So they are all federal funds that were Congress-approved. And it goes to the state and the state distributes it to various cities and counties throughout Kentucky. So that's how it works. We got our share.
Thanks for the clarification, sir.
Yeah. And further clarification, both of these COVID relief funds, they specified what we could use them for.
When you filed the application, you specified, yes.
And so the application was filed for the relief of funding from first responders?
That was on the first one. And then on this one, we'll be discussing tonight, that was for relief for businesses specifically.
Correct, sir.
Thanks for that clarification. I think some people were a little bit confused on that.
Not a problem. It's a very confusing process and probably because A, it's government and B, it was thrown into us during the middle of a pandemic. So everyone gets a learning curve on that. And yeah, we dealt with it and I think pretty, pretty well. And Mr. Yoder will explain that moving forward. Are there any other questions concerning the COVID relief funds or my mayor's report in general? All right, silence is acceptance, I guess. I want to bring to the table today Ms. Cindy Minner. Cindy is an invaluable asset that is brought to us by the Campbell County. Cindy works with us on all of our planning and zoning. So whenever you see things happen in town, we have to figure out whether it works for planning and zoning or not. And Cindy is a great asset for us to figure out those nuances of how it works within city government. And tonight she'd like to talk to us about some residential zoning and industrial zoning. And so Cindy, I'd like to give you the floor to give a speech or presentation on your thoughts.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I apologize that I haven't gotten a chance to get around this past year and kind of attend one of your council meetings in person and get to know you a little bit more and be a resource for you when we have, you know, zone, planning and zoning types discussions. Our department also provides the building permit review and building inspections for the city of Dayton. So we're happy to provide those services to you. Tonight I want to talk to you about some things that we've been talking about for well over a year, but they've kind of boiled up and I want to bring them to your attention in case you do want to decide to move forward with them. Going to give you a little bit of background on just real quick on what some zoning items are and then get into kind of the specific areas that have been flagged. So basically, and I apologize to those of you that know a lot about zoning because I recognize some of the faces that you've dealt with it before. So land use within the city is largely regulated by two documents, your zoning ordinance and your zoning map. Your zoning ordinance is literally the text that tells us, you know, among other things, this is a permitted use. This is the size and dimensions of the lot, kind of where everything gets placed. The other item, the zoning map, actually depicts where the zones are on a map. So they go hand in hand. One is the picture and one is the words that goes with the pictures. Both of these documents require updating from time to time. It's not something we want to touch every month. Sometimes we don't touch them for years, but from time to time they need to be updated. Updates of these items are prescribed by the Kentucky Revised Statute 100, which guides planning and zoning. And both of them have to go through a combination of the Planning Commission and City Council. The Planning Commission serves as the technical body, kind of creating all the technical aspects of it and giving you the reports back. And then you, as council, act as a regulatory body and accept, reject, kick it back, change, whatever you really feel like you need to do. It's not necessarily for you to hash out that first draft. That's really what the Planning Commission does. But I want to bring a topic forward because it's always helpful. Your Planning Commission respects this council very much. And, you know, when a topic comes up, they really look to you to say, "Would you like us to take up this topic?" Because if you don't want them to take up the topic, you know, basically they're not going to spend the time and energy on it. So I want to bring a couple of them up to you. The first one I want you to flag is the R1JJ zone. This is the residential zone that basically is the largest residential zone that you have within the city of Dayton. It's your most common zone, but it's also your smallest lot and your lot sizes are down as tall as 2,500 square feet. I've seen homes bigger than some of these lot sizes. The only permitted use in this zone is single-family detached. And the word detached is very, is the critical piece. Detached meaning they don't share a common wall with any of its neighbors. There's also a wide variety of conditional uses that I'll talk about in a little bit. With respect to the single-family request or item, we have received requests to allow single-family attached units, which are units that share a common wall. Right now you only, you have those in your mixed land uses. You have them in a residential cluster development format. We see them in condominium styles, but we don't see it in the traditional R1JJ zone unless somebody wanted to do a residential cluster development. But they'd have to be doing like a whole block to be able to do that. So you're not going to get the, you know, just the two or three lots together. It's a trend that's out there, that's emerging, you know. Decades ago, it was very common in cities and then we kind of got away from it. And now developers are starting to ask for that back again. We've had, we've had the request in numerous other cities, but now we have the request coming through in Dayton. So I ask you to consider it, think about it, and think about if you would, you know, yes, no, with these conditions, without these conditions. But it is something that I want to bring to your attention to take a look at. And if you would like, the Planning Commission is happy to do some more research and come back to you with some recommendations or to work with you on those. The second item that I would, would point out, and actually you do have some of those shared walls actually in Manhattan Harbor as well as your condominiums. I didn't mean to mention that. So basically, right now you get two adjacent parcels that want to redevelop with a common wall. They're not able to do that. And that's basically a cost-saving measure. That's the primary reason why people are wanting to do that. And I would also point out then, I mentioned in the conditional uses, there's quite a bit of language in your conditional uses in this zone that are just out of date and really difficult to regulate through zoning. For example, there's a great big long discussion on childcare. Childcare is actually regulated by the state. We don't have local jurisdiction over those items. So that language is somewhat antiquated, given today's technology, today's environment. So there's, if you're going to touch the zone, I would like the opportunity to clean up some of those other areas, but only if you decide that you want to touch this zone. Because again, I'm very cognizant of it. This is the largest zone that you have in the city of Dayton. I would actually recommend that you touch it. I would propose that you consider requesting that the Planning Commission open a case file to review and recommend changes to the R1JJ zone. I would give specific considerations to the types of single-family homes available as permitted and/or conditional uses and the modernization of the conditional uses and development controls within this zone. But it's really up to you to decide on that. The second topic that I want to bring up is your industrial zone. Your industrial zone is basically, you know, down along Second, Third, and Fourth Street, kind of in the northeast quadrant of the city. The description, the text in this zone, the descriptions really do need to be updated and need to reflect the types of businesses that you would attract today. The text was initially written in 1979. It was, had significant updates in 97, 2000, 2003, 2013, and 2014. But most of these revisions were, hey, let's just add another use because we have another tenant that wants to come in that does this type of thing. We never really went back and scrubbed it to really get it reflective of what Dayton wants it to be. Commonly, these are small businesses that don't need a storefront. They provide good solid jobs. But, you know, it's just simply, you know, it's not practical to have huge businesses because of the acreage and the proximity to some of the residential uses. And we really, and the other thing is we really, there's not really a lot of quality uses that were envisioned when we started out in 1979, particularly in the technology-related ones. And I'll give you an example. We have printing of books and magazines in there, but because it's so specific to books and magazines, I don't have the ability for a 3D printing shop. And that would be something that would be, I think, valuable to Dayton to have if we had a business like that in there. So it just needs some overall, you know, reconditioning to bring it up to some more modern terminologies. So that is one. And Bob and I have been talking about that one for well over a year of how we can best improve that language. The other item I want to bring up is actually the map for this area. And I feel like you need to consider this as well. The industrial zone was envisioned and defined for properties basically north of Fourth Street or Fourth Avenue and east of Main Street. It included, you know, a number of single-family home sites. The idea was that the property, when it became available, would transition to industrial jobs and basically creating more jobs in Dayton. The challenge is that we have, you know, a single family, we have multiple single-family home lots in the industrial zone. When that happens, it's considered a non-conforming use. Therefore, it's difficult for a property owner to secure financing. And that makes it a challenge for, you know, maintenance when somebody wants to get a home equity loan or resale concerns for somebody that's wanting to sell their property. So some, some of the parcels are more desirable as industrial, future industrial property. We don't want to change everything that's in that zone. But there's also significant clusters that I think need to be evaluated that really maybe they are, they're best served as being, you know, quality, single-family homes. And we've got right now, we have them burdened by that inability to do financing because basically when an agency comes to us and says, "Okay, we want to refinance it." If the house, you know, was completely destroyed and burned to the ground, could I build another single-family home back there? And from a zoning perspective, I have to answer no. And that's, that's the fundamental concern. So I would like to propose to you to consider requesting that the Planning Commission open a case file to review and recommend changes to council, to modernize the text within the I-1 zone and to evaluate the housing stock within this zone and recommend map changes of the zone boundary. And so I'd like to open that up for your discussion. Happy to answer any zoning questions that you may have.
Ms. Minner, taking it back to the initial R1JJ discussion. Our setbacks are, I think, are they also out of date as far as the front, rear, and side setbacks for these smaller lots, these 25-foot wide lots?
I would like to look at them as you go through with it on the dimensional characteristics. We do have, so our setbacks typically, we want to have at least a three-foot setback because, on each side, because a three-foot on one and a three-foot another gives us that five-foot firewall separation. And then from your front yard setback, most of the time we revert back to Chapter 9 of your zoning, which allows us to do that front yard setback with all, even with all the properties in a row. So it gives us a little bit different. What we would be asking for is, if you wanted to go for it with attached homes, which I'm not saying, I think it just needs to be evaluated. The attached homes would basically go to a zero lot line for one, one, one side of it. I would not recommend the zero lot lines for more than two units together if that's the path that you want to go, because I do believe in the value of having some green space between the homes. But it's really, you may want to stay with strictly, you know, all four walls separated.
Well, I would like for... Go ahead, Jeff, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was, I find it interesting. So you're looking at something like the row houses in Newport that are attached in a residential zone, but we are so landlocked in Dayton. I find it interesting where even such a development might occur. I don't know. I'm just trying to think of that. And I do know in the, in the I-1 zone, we've had issues, the issues of the non-conforming use. It's come up multiple times. And I would, I'm for one, I'm really interested in having that looked at and the text changed and looking at the residential area within that zone because that is a continuous problem. Another issue in the R1JJ zone is the rear yard setback. Because every time somebody goes to put a garage in, in the R1JJ zone, they've got to go to get a variance because typically you want that garage on the end of the lot line of the alley. And that's not allowed in the R1JJ zone. Is that not correct?
That would be correct. So, I mean, we can definitely look at the setbacks too, if you want to open up. I mean, we can, if you're opening that section of your text up, we're happy to look at the entire, the entire section in its entirety. With respect to, I'm going to try to categorize these discussions. With respect to, can this occur in any one, you know, any place? We have two different situations that occur. You do have isolated empty lots throughout the city. And there are a few items through places where you have two empty lots side by side. So it's infill development where somebody's looking to develop that. You also have cases where maybe the housing stock is just not of good quality and probably not worth, worth of restoring. So in those cases, it would be a demolition and a rebuild. We've got a little bit of that going on in your neighbors, you know, in your neighboring city right now, where we're seeing some of that occurring. There's actually one right on O'Fallon. If you wanted to look at one that's going on right now. That one's a little bit different because of the flood zone, so. But we're seeing this kind of pop up in different places. I don't see necessarily a major sub, new subdivision going in, but I can see, you know, you know, isolated pockets of houses here and there where somebody will assemble two lots and move forward. So I can see that occurring. You've already got it occurring in Manhattan Harbor, but that's a very different scenario than what I would see in your R1JJ zone. With reset, with respect to the setbacks, you know, we can definitely look at the setbacks in more detail. There is some discussion point in terms of your rear yard setbacks is, do you need to allow a little bit of space just for visibility coming out of your driveways? But just as you have the front yard setback where we can line up everything with the front of the houses, we don't have that language for the rear of the houses. And I think that's the critical item. So we can't take the average setback for the rear. We can only take the average setback for the front. That would actually be in Chapter 9 where that is. And if you wanted to allow us to look at that as well, we can, we can look at that. That would not be unique to the R1JJ zone. That would be for all of your zones that are on an alley where we look at the average setback for the front. If we can look for the average setback for the side of that, for the back, for the alley side of the, of it as well, I think that would be helpful.
So this, this review of, let's just take the R1JJ first. I think it's two separate cases here. If we, if council was to ask for that review, do we have to be specific as to what portions of that? Or can we just allow the planning and zoning to review all of the zoning and make recommendations to council for changes? I realize that would be extensive.
Yeah. So I'm not looking for a total rewrite of your zone right now. And I do need to kind of keep them focused on a topic. So I do think, looking at the residential, if you wanted to look at the residential zones in terms of, you know, getting clarity, purpose, modernizing your residential zones and any, any sections of your zoning ordinance that are, that are complement... any sections of your zoning ordinance that are, that are complimentary to that. For example, we might find something in the definitions that needs to be updated. We might find something in chapter nine which deals with the, you know, ex, you know, exceptions to the front and your rear yard setbacks. And we'll give those specific, you know, we'll work through it with the planning commission, get some, some text proposed, and then you can decide if you wanted to take action on it. They certainly welcome the guidance from their council.
Understood. On the second thing with the industrial zone, again, the definitions in there, I don't know if we have somebody that does a ferry or those horseshoes, but yes, some of them are pretty outdated.
I don't think we have farriers, but there are some pretty fun ones in there.
Well, plus, do we have to have those industries listed in there? I think we need to look at that.
No, I think there's quite a few that you can remove that maybe are not desirable for Dayton and they don't exist in Dayton right now. I also think that the, the language needs to be current. I've kind of gone through and done a rough draft already, so we have a starting point to, to, to dig in with your planning commission. The, the benefit of any of these types of changes is they're not on a timeline of, hey, I have to do it next month. If it takes them three meetings to work through something, that's perfectly normal.
Well, I don't know if it would be a third topic or it would be inclusive with the industrial zone discussion, but it's been brought up in the past, as you said, there are some areas there that are grandfathered in or nonconforming use because they're an existing single family home. For example, the thousand, eleven hundred and twelve hundred block on the south side of Third Street. And there has been talk in the past of redefining the boundaries of the industrial zone versus R one J J in that area. Which obviously would be a council approval, should it be proposed. Would that be a third topic that we would have to ask for, or?
That, that's what I am implying by looking at the zoning map in the industrial zone. And it's that, exactly that specific area where you have some good quality housing stock in there. But those individuals are, are a little bit hampered by, you know, financing abilities and things of that nature, which are, or even resale. And, but it's good quality housing stock, and I don't really see it ever transitioning unless, you know, the world really changes for an industrial user to come in and buy two or three houses to put a small business in. I think you're better served with a certain portion of that keeping it as housing stock. So I would actually propose that we were able to look at the industrial zone text and the industrial zone map for candidates that they may be transitioned to a different zone.
And that would be, tho- those would both be part of the second part of this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other areas you'd like to, or guidance you'd like to give to your planning commission?
I'd be excited to see these changes, so I'm all for the discussion to be open.
Well, Mr. Edmondson, procedurally, how do we proceed to authorize this? Do we have to come up with definitive guidelines for planning and zoning? Do we have to vote on them? What is, what is the next step?
It's a resolution authorizing them to start taking a look at the various components of the zoning code. You're not doing a whole rewrite, so if you want to limit it to residential zones or whatever the suggestion is from Ms. Mentor.
Um, I can take a stab at. That hurt. I'll try it again. Okay. I can take a stab at, at kind of giving you a motion and then you can, can take it from there. I would request the council entertain a motion to request that the planning commission open a case file to review and recommend changes for the R one J zone and any supporting texts from other sections of the zoning ordinance. Just leave it at that for the R one J J zone. And then a second one would be that council entertain a motion to request that the planning commission open a case file to review and recommend changes to council to modernize the text of the I one zone and to evaluate the housing stock within this zone and recommend map changes of the zone boundary.
Okay, so Ms. Mentor, you, you've asked that council two, two separate things here. First thing would be to request, so we'll, we'll take this separately. I think that's procedurally correct, yes?
You can do them separately or, or together, but I will handle them as, I would prefer to handle them as two separate cases. In case one takes more time.
Yeah, so I, I believe council right now, what she's asking is for a request that one of the council members makes a motion to request that planning commission to open a case file to review and recommend changes to the R one J J zone. So if anybody on council is so, is so moved to do that.
I would like to make that motion.
Remember, Bazir's made the motion. Do we have a second for that request?
I give that motion.
Remember, Neiman's made that second. Do we have any? Do we have any discussion regarding that? Can I get a roll call, please, on, on that request?
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Mute.
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, I was muted. I tried to do a good job of muting myself, maybe too good a job. Maybe not too good a job depending on your stance. The ayes have it, and we'll move forward with that. So I believe now Ms. Mentor is asking if council would like to request to enter a motion to request the planning commission to open a case file to review and recommend cha- changes to city council to modernization the text within the I one zone and to evaluate the housing stock within the zone and recommend map changes to the zone boundary. Again, this is just a recommendation. Would any council member? Member Basar again. Member Neary, was that you in a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Neiman, she had the second. Roll call, please, Ms. Myers.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Long overdue, aye.
And the ayes have it, unless Mr. Bazir's dog has anything to say about it. All right.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much for your service to the city.
Thanks, Senator. Thank you.
Is it your birthday?
No, uh, we, we celebrated a holiday back in the middle of January.
Those are good balloons, then.
Yeah.
They've lasted a while.
They have.
Well, thank you very much for your time this evening.
You're welcome.
Sir, actually, I do have one question from Ms. Mentor before she goes. Our city ordinances, we have them online through American Legal Publishing. Are, are our zoning ordinances also online?
I will confirm that you have the most current ones online. And if they are not online on the city's webpage, I will see that they get there.
Please do, please do. Cause I used to have the old zoning book, which, when I was on Board of Adjustments, which is about four inches thick.
Yeah.
And they haven't been up.
We did have it retyped in twenty seventeen. So you, the old version, if you ha- still have it, looks like it was done on a typewriter. We did actually convert it all to Word, did a quite a bit of spell check on it in twenty seventeen, so there is a, the new and improved one out there.
Yeah, I think that would be the first step for all of council and for P and Z that, that everybody's looking at the same copy of it. So if you get a link to that online, that'd be great.
We, I will be happy to make sure that that's there. Thank you.
Anybody else from Ms. Mentor before she can call tonight? Well, we thank you very much time for your, for your, your time, Ms. Mentor.
All right, I'm going to bow out. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving along on the agenda this evening, we had two meetings for the month of January twenty twenty-one. The first was on January fifth, our regularly scheduled meeting, so I would like to ask for an approval of the minutes from January fifth, twenty twenty-one. Would anybody like to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Ms. Kelly's made the approval, the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? Any abstentions? Minutes for January fifth were approved. The second meeting that we had was January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, which was a special meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one? All right. Mr. Neary, you know how I do it. Ladies first, Ms. Neiman had it in first. So Ms. Neiman had the, first, do we have a second?
I'll do that. I'll second that motion.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Aye.
Any abstentions? The meeting of minutes for January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one were approved. The next two things are some sealed bids. The first would be the sealed bid for one one seven Fourth Avenue. We received a multiple bid, I'm sorry, a single bid for one one seven Fourth Avenue. We reached out to all the neighborhoods, the people in the neighborhood, and also published this in the Campbell County Record as well as our Facebook page that bids were being accepted for that. So do we have an acceptance, a motion to accept the bid for one one seven Fourth Avenue? I believe you've received those in your packets.
I'll make the motion to accept the bid for one one seven Fourth Avenue.
Member Neiman's made a motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my member Volter. I need discussion. Roll call, please.
No, it's, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Neary, you have discussion.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. When we opened this up for bid, we did ask for a definition or some description of what the property owner was going to use it for. I, in my opinion, the, the, the usage proposal was very, very vague on this. I'm presuming that it would still fall under any zoning. And, and I also have a concern that if you look at the PVA website, that that lot is actually, the land value is much, much higher.
To, to answer your first question, yes, you can't put an airport there. As much as I'd love to. Secondly, Ms. Myers, what, what was the value that was received on the bid?
Yes, it was nine thousand dollars and it was from, um, let me see. It was from Brendan Sullivan.
All right. So nine thousand dollars for that land. Mr. Neary, do you know the appraised value of that, that land?
I don't know the appraised value, but if I'm not mistaken, I looked on the PVA site the other night, and it was valued at forty-five.
For the land?
There's no building on it. So yes, sir, it would be strictly for the land.
Okay.
I, I doubt if that's correct. I bet that's when there was a house there. PVA has got that evaluated when there was a house on that lot at forty-five.
That sounds high for an empty lot, that size, quite honestly.
So, so.
PVA is often not up to date.
Oh. There's no following around.
I would like to bring up the point that that lot is currently covered in gravel, which I believe isn't up to our ordinance and would hope that that would be remediated fairly quickly throughout all this. If they do go ahead with doing what they will with the property, I would hope that they would correct the, the gravel situation.
We can certainly have our code enforcement look at that. So do we have a motion to accept the sealed bid for one one seven Fourth Avenue?
Or does he have?
Motion and a second on the floor.
I apologize, I'm sorry. Sometimes I get caught up. Do we have any discussion concerning one one seven Fourth Avenue? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any ayes?
Aye.
Any other ayes? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The second would be the sealed bids for the police cruisers. Dayton Police Department has put out a sealed bid for some cruisers are no longer in use. Ms. Myers, what were the bids that were received?
We received two bids. One, one was from Rowdy Auto Sales. And for the two thousand and ten Ford Explorer, they did five hundred, one dollars and one penny. The two thousand and nine Crown Vic, they did five, five hundred, one dollars and one penny. And we received one from Archie Pearson for the Ford Crown Vic for one thousand and ten. So based on that, I would recommend we go forth with Rowdy Auto Sales, giving them the two thousand and ten Ford Explorer for five oh one oh one and Archie Pearson for the Ford Crown Vic for one thousand and ten.
Do we have a motion to accept the sealed bid for the cruisers at Ms. Myers recommendations?
I'll make that motion to accept the bid for the cruisers.
Member Bazir's made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Member Kelly's made a second. Do I have any conversation regarding the cruisers? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. So both sealed bids have passed. We now will be moving along in our agenda to discussion of the economic development applications for COVID nineteen financial assistance program. This is something I, I alluded to in my mayor's report. Mr. Yoder has a presentation he would like to give to council regarding the hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that were received for COVID nineteen. Mr. Yoder, the floor is yours, sir.
Bob, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. We discussed this extensively last week, and I think I've heard from everybody here tonight with suggestions and changes, and we had another committee meeting last week, and we've gone through several rounds. So I set it out earlier, and I think we'll just go through how the program looks now. So I'm going to share my screen. And bring it up. Minor changes just in the wording to the first paragraph. A couple typo corrections. Did add to, uh, you can either email it to me or mail it to six fourteen Sixth Avenue, Dayton, Kentucky. We'd also accept them if somebody just came in and dropped it off. So that would be fine.
Five fourteen Sixth Avenue.
Five fourteen Sixth Avenue, yes. All eligible business to apply will receive a grant of a thousand, uh, apply for a grant of a thousand dollars. We changed the whole thing from two levels of twenty-five hundred and five hundred to one thousand for everybody. That simple thing, simplified things a lot. All eligible businesses, and we add that in the city of Dayton, even if you consider yourself to be a nonprofit organization, you're still incorporated as a business. You're just a nonprofit business, so. So if you ask about nonprofits, that's included in there. The only businesses that are really are not eligible are publicly traded. They would have to have had a valid occupational license prior to July first, twenty twenty, start of the fiscal year. And recipient businesses must have a valid city of Dayton occupational license and up to date and all applicable taxes, license and fees. So before we give any money out, you'd have to make sure that all your taxes and licenses and fees have been paid. All submitted applications will be reviewed and approved by the city of Dayton's Economic Development Committee. And I've got an application period here starting on Monday and going for three weeks to March first. And I've got an application period here starting on Monday and going for three weeks to March first. So getting everything in and then we'll evaluate them, uh, on or, on or around March first, which is a Monday. So that goes in there. So those are the changes that we did. Um. So it was first come, first served before. Now we're doing them, uh, all at one time. So we can get, be more fair and, and viewing everybody. At one point, they have three weeks to get them in. Um, the next thing's on here is the application, uh, information, pretty standard, what we asked for, for all of our applications. Uh, very simple, I mean, very similar to the C cap application. Uh, did something here, verification is different of occupancy if applicable. Uh, it's case somebody had a business that they ran out of their home or something like that. So it's F applicable. So we've got all that go. Verification of date opened, essentially do we do they have the occupational tax, uh, prior to July one, two thousand and twenty? Um, the last section is descrip-, you know, uh, brief description of the history of the company, the challenge your business has faced and how it hasn't been impacted by, uh, COVID nineteen, included the state mandated restrictions that have been imposed. We added this sentence, Jay helped me write it. Applicant is strongly encouraged to submit in written documentation to support the loss of business revenue, increased expenses or financial hardships incurred by the businesses as the COVID nineteen pandemic. So I would say the more if it, the more you can quantify what your increased costs, revenue losses, impact was, the stronger your application will be. So you can attach that with the application. And the last section, pretty much the same. It's an authorization, uh, pretty standard of what we do here that they're signing a contract with here, with us here and that everything that they said has been truthful. So I think we've done a pretty good job of meeting everybody's concerns that they brought up. I just, I'll open this right now on this section. Are there any questions? All right.
I have a question. Um. So my, my main concern with this whole thing now would be that the funds that were set to approve may not cover both, uh, incentives. So if we are set to approve fifty five thousand and more than fifty five businesses apply for this thousand dollar loan, doesn't that set us up to have to go back to council for more money?
What?
Would it leave us any space for the other program?
I was still planning on doing forty. Uh, that's what we talked about last month. Uh, fifty five thousand is for both programs. Um, I was still looking at forty grants for this and hopefully that, uh, the Dayton Dining Program doesn't use all the funds and we could use that at, uh, the, when that gets, uh, wrapped up, uh, might be able to use it for other things. So, uh, the plan that I have been going under has, uh, forty awards of one thousand piece.
Mr. Basler, you're right, though. If you, if you did, if there were other businesses that wanted to apply and the money had been expended, then you would have to go do a second approval to get tapped into those funds which have been received by, uh, the city from federal government.
Okay, thank you.
So. Any other conversation regarding the, the first part of Mr. Yoder's discussion?
Well, I, I appreciate that you put in there that the applications will be reviewed and approved or denied by the committee, the Economic Development Committee, uh, which, uh, just to reiterate is yourself, the mayor, uh, Mr. Fawcett or city administrator, if one is hired by then, and then council members, Kelly and Neiman, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
So the second section on here is the Dayton, uh, Dining Dollars Program. Uh, we discussed this. This is, uh, the cover. Uh, Joe, you asked that we do the expiration date on June first because some of our businesses don't open till May. Uh, we've put that in here. Participating locations, uh, I'll go and talk to each of the, uh, restaurants that would be, uh, be able to use this after this is approved and that will be updated with how many choose to take part. Um, so the only thing that has really changed from last week is adding the expiration date. And budget is still the same. So, um, I, if a hundred percent comes in here, there's thirteen, thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Um. I'm guessing more, uh, nothing more than around thirty six hundred, four thousand dollars or less. So, um, you know, if we get above twenty percent, uh, participation, uh, that's great. That's great for our businesses. That means, you know, they earn more money, they get more customers coming in. But my gut feeling is it's probably a twenty percent would be very success, would be very successful. And, uh, that there may be some more money left over, um, to use for more grant awards or oth- other economic development programs that we looked for, um, around June time. So I should know pretty quickly, um, what I would expect as general, I would say most of your redemptions will come in in the first month and then it will taper off a long leg in the back. So we'll have a pretty good idea to what our expenditures will be on this. But as I mentioned last week, we have to allocate our funding as if it was a hundred percent redemption. So that's kind of why I've done it this way. Um, because we have to allocate the funds for, for what, uh, we could use as expected expenses. So any questions on this? Going, going. Well, thank you. Um, I enjoyed, uh.
Make one comment. Uh. I, I talked with the mayor a little bit about maybe trying to do a little bit of an upgrade to the design if we could maybe,
Sure.
put that before committee or whatever, but, uh, I'll try to submit something to you guys soon.
Yeah, I said, I just, I threw this together as a simple thing. If someone can come up with something better, I just gotta keep it. I looked at it, keeping it simple. If somebody has a better design, uh, you're not going to, um, bother me one bit. So this is just something we put together. Um, so if somebody wants to come back, uh, would like to see it within the next week. I really want to start get this printed out and get in the mail. So if somebody could, you know, uh, if we could do, get another design to us, um, by next Tuesday and I, how about if I just run the other design by the Economic Development Committee and go, go for their approval?
Sounds good.
Oh, that's fine.
Uh, if I could, uh, in twenty percent, like you said, Bob, that'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
With twenty five hundred mailings, that's five hundred new visits.
Right.
To our restaurants. So even though we've scaled back on the twenty five hundred dollars per restaurant, this could actually bring in a lot more money to those restaurants because it's per visit. That could be an entire family spending fifty, sixty dollars or more.
Right. Or it could be somebody sampling a restaurant, one of our restaurants for the first time and they're like, oh my gosh, I didn't know how great this was. We hear that, see that all, often people say that on Facebook. So this brings, this will bring customers into the door, which I think all our businesses real, that's what they'd rather have. I mean, I, they'll be happy to have a thousand dollar check. We get that. But we also know they'd much rather have customers coming into the door, especially even new customers coming in the door. So, uh, this is kind of like, uh, the I ate in date campaign we did a few years ago. Um, but you know, um, this one, we're going directly to the residents and saying, hey, this is our way of saying, come sample our restaurants or go visit one of your favorite restaurants again. So.
And on the, uh, thousand dollars per business, we discussed it last week in the discussion meeting, you are going to send out letters with the application to every business in town, correct?
Yes. All our occupational licenses that are located in the city of Dayton.
Thank you, sir.
So that's why you need to have an occupational license in because that's where you get the mail. We'll be putting this out probably, I said, March eighth, probably by the end of the week, we'll be getting these out the doors, get them online, put them on Facebook, do our efforts. I've already got a draft of this for the website. So when we get this approved, uh, we'll start getting that application out there to as many people as possible. Anything else? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder, for your presentation. Uh, thank you to the Economic Development Committee for, uh, meeting, uh, these last couple of weeks. And, and again, these funds were just received to us earlier this year. Uh, and we have this money sitting in our, our bank account and, and, and thanks to the, the state for, for giving us that money for the relief fund. It's doing us no good sitting in our bank account and it's doing every bit of good, getting it into the hands of the business owners that, that so desperately need it. So I really appreciate all the hard work that, that you guys have done for this and, uh, we don't like to hurt anything up, but, uh, I, I think this was qualified for, for moving fast. So with that being said, uh, do we need to make a motion to accept this program?
I think that's what the order is for at the end, or it should be ordered.
Oh, yeah. Two zero two one three R.
Hmm.
Thanks, Ms. Myers. Keep me on track. Thanks, Mr. Yoder.
Yep.
We're now moving along to the ordinance orders. Uh, the second reading, first one would be ordinance twenty twenty one. Number one, an ordinance waiving the twenty twenty alcohol license fee. Ms. Myers?
This is a second reading, City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty one, an ordinance waiving the twenty twenty alcohol license fee for all applicants due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This ordinance authorized waiver of the twenty twenty alcohol license fee for all the applicants due to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
And that is a second reading. Do we have a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty one, number one?
Move to accept ordinance number twenty twenty one, number one.
Remember, Volter's made the move to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member Neiman. Do we have any discussion regarding order twenty twenty one, number one?
Will this, have, have any businesses already paid this alcohol license?
Yes.
Yes, they have, and they will be reimbursed if they've already paid it.
Thank you, that was.
And again, this, this will be coming from that COVID relief fund.
Um, do they still have to apply even though they don't have to pay? Like, do you have to submit any paperwork or they just are skipping the paperwork this year?
Once this is approved, um, our plan is to go ahead and just issue the license, but on the fee part, just put waived due to this ordinance right here. And that way they don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
And we are assigning some of this hundred and thirty six thousand dollar business relief COVID money towards this, correct?
Hundred twenty six thousand and yes, sir.
Thanks.
Very welcome. Do we have any other comments regarding twenty twenty one, number one? Well, we have a motion and we have a second. Do I have a roll call, please?
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Basler?
I recuse my vote.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Four out of five means this passes. We'll move along now to ordinance twenty twenty one, number two, an ordinance amending the penalty for violations of chapter one five seven, the registration of vacant real estate property. Ms. Myers?
This is the second reading, City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty one, number two, an ordinance amending the penalty for violation of chapter one fifty seven of the Code of Ordinances, registration of vacant real property. This ordinance amends the penalty for violation of chapter one fifty seven of the Code of Ordinances, titled Registration of Vacant Real Property, by allowing fines for failure to register property to also count towards or offset any unpaid or outstanding registration fees owed. Moreover, it amend the penalty for failure to maintain accurate registration information from one hundred dollar fine per day of violation to the city's civil fine schedule.
That was the reading of twenty twenty one, number two. Do I have a motion to accept twenty twenty one, number two?
I'll make that motion.
Remember, Basler's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Remember, Neiman's made a second. Uh, they opened it up for comments regarding twenty twenty one, number two.
This recommendation was this, sir?
A member edge, uh, a previous, uh, attorney edge.
And are you familiar with his reasoning on this? Does this make the vacant registration ordinance stronger or weaker?
Stronger, I believe, sir.
That's the goal.
Any other comments regarding twenty twenty one, number two? Comments are being closed. Roll call, please, Ms. Myers.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five to nothing. Uh, moving along to the ordinance twenty twenty one, number three, it's accepting the CARES funding for the fiscal year of twenty twenty one budget.
This is the second reading, City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty one, number three, and ordinance accepting CARES Act federal funding in the amount of one hundred twenty six thousand, two hundred eighty three dollars and appropriating these funds in the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget for the use by the city in accordance with the act.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Do we have a motion to accept twenty twenty one, number three?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty one, number three.
Remember, Kelly's made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, remember, I remember Neary. Do we have any comments regarding twenty twenty one, number three? Closing. Comments are closed. Roll call, please, Ms. Myers.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member, uh, Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Five votes and I, it passes. Moving along to orders twenty twenty one, number four, amending the budget to appropriate the CARES funds to economic development. Ms. Myers?
This is the second reading, City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance twenty twenty, number four, and ordinance amending budget ordinance twenty twenty, number nine, to change funding and to appropriate fifty five thousand to an economic development fund in creating a line item fund named CARES Act Brona Virus Relief Fund, specifically for the purposes of implementing a CARES Act relief fund and allocating those funds for qualifying expenses under the act.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Uh, it's been read. Do we have a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty one, number four?
Move to accept twenty twenty one, number four.
Remember, Volter's made the move to accept. Do I have a second?
I second.
Remember, Neiman's second. Do we have any comments regarding twenty twenty one, number four?
Leave the verbiage on that says approximately fifty five thousand dollars. I, I wanna, I just want to make sure that it is up to and not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars. Um, the second question that I have is the, uh, the total of the grant or the, the COVID funding on this particular one, uh, was, what was it, one hundred and twenty six thousand dollars, sir?
Yes, sir.
So we're moving fifty five in economic development for this program.
Correct.
The remainder is to stay in a line item in the general budget for future use, correct?
Correct. And the, the idea behind that is if you had asked us back in March of two thousand and twenty, uh, we were hunkering down for two weeks and everything was going to be good. Uh, would rather not, uh, spend all of the one, two, six thousand dollars, uh, in the first swoop in case we could use this again for other programs and or department expenses.
Understood and agreed. Uh, the, the fifty five thousand in, in this line item in it, which will now be in the economic development fund. Uh, are we going, is council going to get reports on, uh, how it is spent so that we can keep up with the progress on it?
I'm getting a thumbs up from Mr. Yoder. So yes, you will, uh, definitely receive those in council, uh, minutes.
Okay. And the third question I have is of that fifty five thousand dollars, let's say we, with the applications for the thousand dollar relief and by the first of June with we, with the applications for the thousand dollar relief and by the first of June with the five dollar promo, if we've only spent, say, forty thousand of that, we can still use that remaining, not only that remaining dollar amount, but also what we've kept back in the general fund for any kind of business relief for COVID throughout the end of the year, calendar year.
That is correct, sir.
Fiscal year, oh, yeah, calendar year, that's correct.
I just wanted to make that clear because there's some misunderstanding about where the money can and can't be used. And I, I'd like to build Tacoma Pool too, but we can't use this for that.
That's correct, sir. And I appreciate you bringing that up, that it's not fiscal year, but calendar year. Uh, these funds need to be used by December thirty-first of this year. And we will use those. Make sure that they get to the hands that need them. Do we have any other comments regarding ordinance twenty-twenty-one, number four? Closing comments in three, two, and they are closed. Uh, we have a motion by member Volter, a second by member Nyman. Roll call, please.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Nyman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Basler?
I'm gonna recuse my vote on the terms that I am a business owner and don't want any conflict of interest for my vote.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Four to one, uh, with one recusal. And it passes. The last, or I'm sorry, the second last piece we have here is order twenty-twenty-one, two Rs in Romeo, which is the sale of surplus property for the skate park equipment. Ms. Myers, please.
City of Dayton, Kentucky municipal order number twenty-twenty-one, number two R. A municipal order declaring city-owned personal property as surplus and authorizing the mayor to dispose of the now obsolete skateboarding ramp.
That was ramps. Thank you very much, Ms. Myers. Uh, that was the reading. Do we have a motion to accept twenty-twenty-one to Romeo?
So moved.
Member Neary's made the movement. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by member Volter. Do we have any comments regarding twenty-twenty-one to Romeo?
I would just like to make the comment that the, um, equipment is definitely beyond repair or use. And we have consulted with, uh, professional skateboarders such as Gary Collins about its future use. Um, and he advised us against using this for skateboarding. So if anyone is upset by this motion, um, just let it be known that we did our due diligence in that the skateboard could not be saved the way it is. That's all.
I appreciate that, member Basler. And I think you guys all know, I actually come from a skateboarding past. So would love to keep it if it were actually used, but, uh, it's dangerous to the point where it shouldn't be. Thank you, Mr. Basler. Any other comments regarding twenty-twenty-one to Romeo? Closing comments in three, two, one. Comments closed. Do we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Myers?
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Twenty-twenty-one to Romeo passes. Uh, the last would be order twenty-twenty-one-three Romeo, approval of the COVID-nineteen financial assistance program. Ms. Myers?
City of Dayton, Kentucky resolution number twenty-twenty, number three R. A resolution creating the City of Dayton's COVID-nineteen Financial Assistance Program and the Dayton Dying Dollars Program for the purposes of assisting eligible businesses that have been impacted by the COVID-nineteen crisis and the mandated closures therefrom.
Thank you very much, Ms. Myers. Uh, do we have a motion to accept twenty-twenty-one-three Romeo?
So moved.
Member Neary's made the motion. Do we have another, do we have a second?
Second.
Member Nyman has made the second. Neiman, I'll get this right one of these days, Ms. Neiman. Uh, do we have any comments regarding, uh, twenty-twenty-one-three Romeo?
Again, I just want to clarify, the verbiage should be up to and not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. I believe it says approximately.
Mr. Edmondson?
It's not a material change. We can make it. Can be done.
Can we make that a condition with the, with the motion and the second?
Definitely.
But then I would like to make the, uh, what would it be called, sir?
Well, you've got, you're making amendment to it, but it's not substantial in form. So we don't have to go through the whole process of first and second reading again. But I think there's a motion on the floor already. So someone would have to withdraw their first and second so that if that amendment wants to be made, otherwise you gotta vote on the first if there's a second.
So it does say approximately, correct?
Yes, I'm looking at it in section two.
Before we amend it, we already passed a, uh, ordinance that directed the finance officer to move exactly fifty-five thousand dollars to the Economic Development Fund. The reason this says approximate is that you may not use all of that.
Right, that's why I said up to, but not to exceed.
You can't exceed the fifty-five thousand that's moved in there. That's all that's moved in there, Joe.
Mr. Edmondson, that would be a moot point then, correct?
I think, yeah.
I, I, I think.
It's a good distinction. Yeah, it's true.
I appreciate the, yeah, the cleaning up of words, Mr. Neary. Uh, I just don't know if it's necessary? Since we don't, we can't go above fifty-five grand?
Well, there is other funds in economic development that are not uh, assigned to anything yet. That's, I just want to be careful that we don't exceed the fifty-five that were covered there legally. I don't, I don't think that we would, uh, but I just checking the verbiage there, that's all. And if, if Mr. Edmondson feels it's a moot point, I'll withdraw my comment.
Hey, you're trying to make it clean, Joe, and I appreciate that. Mr. Edmondson, do you believe it's a moot point?
It's a moot point.
Mr. Neary? Okay, thumbs up, uh, mute on. Uh, so we had a, uh, a first and a second. Do we have any other comments regarding twenty-twenty-one-three Romeo?
Um, my only comment or question would be, so we would then have this, you know, the second reading passes next month, which then would tie in with the timeline that we're looking at for being able to allocate funds to the businesses that submit applications. There's not going to be a lag or anything.
There wouldn't be a second reading. This is an order.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments?
I believe Mr. Fosse was muted.
Um, yeah, the ordinance is the two reading. This is an order, it only needs one. So it, it, once this is passed by city council, it will immediately be, uh, ready to go into effect.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding, uh, two zero two one three Romeo?
Well, sir, we wanted to get this money out into the hands of the business community quickly. And this is about as quickly as we can do it. So I appreciate everybody's efforts.
That's the idea. Roll call, please, Ms. Myers.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
Member Basler?
I recuse.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Nyman?
Aye.
Four in favor, one recusal, uh, that passes. And that leads us to the last portion of our agenda today. That would be Mr. Edmondson. Would you like to give your city attorney's report, sir?
Thanks, Mayor, appreciate that. Um, you all received, certainly that everyone received an orientation packet concerning some of the rules and, and how, um, the city moves and, and your responsibility. And there was one thing that was kind of lost in that orientation packet. And, and that is really the process of, of these open meetings and, and really how to deal with the fact that we're on Zoom and how we're communicating and how we're talking. Um, and a question was proposed about what happens to, um, at these meetings if, if a person receives a text or is texting back and forth. Jay and I existed in the days where you would lean over to the shoulder of your colleague and you would have private discussions on the floor. We now know, um, that, that that's not permissible and is really not, is really frowned upon because any discussion you have in an open forum needs to be, everyone in the audience needs to be able to hear it, everyone in public. It's now complicated by Zoom because with electronic media, texting, phones, emails that are constantly being barraged. Anytime that, that a council member, uh, or anyone for that matter, talks about, I've received an email or just received a text and you're gonna get it because people are live, they're watching on YouTube, they, they could be listening and they just want to get instant gratification by sending you some form of a, a message or note. Just please be very careful, um, and remind yourself or try to remind yourself, and I'll try to do the same, is that whatever is being sent to you is part of the public record. And it needs to be brought to the attention of the council so that, and the clerk, and more importantly, part of the record, so that you have that moralized. The downside is, is if, or really if there is a, a private discussion, then someone could argue that it's void by virtue of the fact that there has been some communication that wasn't made public. And we don't want that. So if you're having a conversation, you're, you're down on your phone and it's gonna be very difficult to discern. Of course, we can't see what's on your computer or on your phone. But if, if there is a council member that says, hey, I just received a text or just received an email from so-and-so and, and we're not able to disclose that to the rest of the board, there's a problem. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. I expect that there's some pretty smart lawyers out there that are, that are trying to, right now, trying to, um, you know, really impose their will as it pertains to some of the things that have happened and transpired because of these Zoom hearings. So i- if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to elaborate. But I think gone are the days of whispering to your neighbor about what you're thinking. So any questions on that? Okay. The second thing that I wanted to also add is that, since I've been here for a, a little over a month, I'm working, trying to work hard to try to figure out some of the things that need to be addressed. And Cassie, to her credit, brought some things up. And, and we're looking at, at the code as it pertains to condemnation powers, as we're looking to police powers and, and also some, uh, issues just involving some dilapidated properties. And we're working through, trying to figure out how to have a more immediate response. Clear from what I think is, is very true with most cities, um, the ordinance books are older. In some cases, the language is antiquated. We've heard of that tonight with farriers and other things that are just simply there because they were there. Well, we're looking at some of the, the ordinances in, in the code in particular and found out that most of our, our condemnation orders or blight orders, some of this refers, relates back to seventies and eighties. So Cassie and I are gonna be sitting down next week to kind of go through it because we have these immediate situations at hand where we really have some life-saving, uh, concerns in the city. And how do we react? There's lots of different ways we can do it, some of which are we can, you know, file criminal citations, which gets property owners' responses fairly quickly. Others are liens and you're all intimately familiar with liens. Lien sit on property, costs a lot of time and money, and sometimes they're not very efficient. And then lastly, there's the, the police powers, the fire departments and fire chiefs, be able to come in and shut some of these problem properties down. That's what's happening. So, I mean, kudos to Cassie for bringing to our attention, um, something I think it may have been overlooked only because of the fact there's so many other needs that a city has. But I really, Jay, Jay knows this, we believe so strongly in blight eradication. It's, it's what rocks the community. And we're gonna really work hard to make sure that we go after some of these slum lords. They've just been taking advantage of your city for so many years. We're gonna update the tools, we're gonna make some amendments and, and hopefully you all pass some of these strong ordinances that get us to where we need to be. And you'll start to see these over the next couple of months. So really going after the problem properties that have just sit there in language. So thanks for your time and, and understanding as we get through it. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Appreciate that, Mr. Edmondson, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your update, Mr. Edmondson. And, and really love it when we hear nothing to report. Seems like we've had, uh, quite a few years of people saying, nothing to report. Well, we're not hearing it these days. I, I appreciate that. Uh, so we would now like to, uh, first of all, want to thank everybody for coming together again in, uh, Zoom and online on, and YouTube and all those good things. I hope everyone's staying safe out there and healthy. And with that being said, uh, does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Member Volter has moved to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by member Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions or accusations, Mr. Basler? Kid, buddy. Thank you very much for, uh, joining us today for Tuesday, February second, twenty-twenty-one.
Later, everybody.